It being six o'clock on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, I'm calling this Board of Select meeting to order and we'll begin with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by the local scene formerly known as PAC TV. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the selectman's office. As a reminder, the parking lot at the Adena is closed as of March 1st and will be closed through May 1st due to the reconstruction of the boat ramp. So, thank you for your patience in this spring and we look forward to hearing about all the new spots folks have found to have their morning coffees. Dog licenses are available in the clerk's office. Please keep in mind there is a $20 late fee if your dog is not registered by March 15th, which is this Friday. So be sure to come into the townhouse before it closes at 11:30 on Friday to do that. On March 19th, the Agricultural Commission is sponsoring a program for all ages which will feature guest speaker, Mike Porter, Catskill Forest Association President, and he will speak on the health benefits of maple syrup and discuss what maple syrup is and how it is made. The program begins at 7:00 PM and registration is not required, so you can just show up. Reach out to a member of the Agricultural Commission if you have any questions. Annual town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May 4th and the annual election is scheduled for May 18th, both of those are Saturdays. Nomination papers are available in the town clerk's office now and due back before 11:30 AM on Friday, March 29th and as a reminder, the last day to pull papers, I believe, is the 27th. Also, the last day to register to vote in the local election is Wednesday, May 8th. For anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards. To name a few, there are openings on the Community Preservation Committee, Capital Planning Committee, Kingston 300th, the Affordable Housing Trust, and more. So to see a complete list of openings, please visit our website, kingstonma.gov. And if you or someone else you know is interested in filling one of those vacancies, we would love to hear from you. So reach out to the selectman's office. Are there any other announcements? No? Okay. Is there anyone here or online for open forum?
See any hands up?
No? Okay. I don't know what the exact time is, we're at 6:03, alright. Our first appointment is a 6:05 public hearing, we cannot begin that until 6:05. So let me skim down here and see what we could do. We have number three, approval of one-day liquor licenses. If we can do that, that should only take a minute or two. So we received a request for two one-day liquor licenses for an upcoming hockey tournament, actually this coming weekend. So we have received all the necessary paperwork and it's been reviewed and approved by the fire chief and interim police chief. So unless anyone has any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request for Michael Snodell, DBA Stellwagen Beer Company, for two one-day beer and wine liquor licenses for the Clover Cup Hockey Tournament at the bog. The event is taking place on March 15th, 2024, 5 to 10, and March 16th, 12 to 6.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so that was a 5, 0, 0, and I'm not sure that took the two minutes it needed. It did, excellent.
I tried to go a little slower.
Well, I appreciate that. So as, back to appointment number one. So as we discussed briefly in our meeting on February 27th, we received a request from A3 to amend their alcohol license to be able to sell all types of alcohol, not just malt and wine. So at that meeting, I read the public hearing notice and we opened the hearing, but now I need a motion to reopen that hearing.
I move the Board of Select to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's 5, 0, 0. And is there anyone here to speak on this request? Were there any thoughts, concerns, questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, well that was easy. So we need to close the public hearing?
I move the Board of Select to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I move the Board of Select to approve the amendment to the license of Three Dogs LLC doing business as A3 Pizza to all, to an all-alcohol beverage license.
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now we're gonna have the same problem on our second appointment. Can't start that until 6:15. So, let's see. How about...
Do five?
Uh, hold on a second, let me see. Five, well, yeah, we could do that. We could do number five, so... Appointment number five, we received a request by Promoter Line Incorporated to hold their annual Cape Cod Getaway MS Bike Ride on June 29th. So for those unfamiliar with this event, the funds raised from this event will be used to advance the National MS Society, to advance their support of national research, and to support local programming for more than 27,000 people within Greater New England who are affected by multiple sclerosis. The event begins in Quincy at 7:00 AM and organizers expect the approximately 900 participants to ride through the town of Kingston sometime between, probably not 7 since it starts at 7, but sometime in the morning until about 4:00 PM. They will be riding along Loring Street, Landing Road, Main Street, Brook Street, Elm Street, Indian Pond Road, Bishop's Highway, rest stop at Sacred Heart Elementary School, before proceeding into, onto parting ways and then out of Kingston. Does anyone have any questions on the request or any concerns on the recommendations from the police chief and superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks?
Nope.
No?
I move the Board of Select to approve the request from Promoter Line Inc. to hold the annual Cape Cod Getaway MS Bike Ride on June 29th, 2024. According to the traffic control plan presented with the following conditions. The applicant successfully acquires the proper permits to hold said event from MassDOT. The applicant contacts the Kingston Police Department to schedule detail officers as recommended by the interim police chief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, and we'll be sure to let folks know that's coming so they won't be surprised when they see all the bikes coming through town. Alright. We can, um, let's just keep moving in order if we can a little bit through here, so... Well, not very long, I guess. On number six, I think we could probably talk about that briefly and that might bring us to 6:15. So, last year, early last year, our board discussed the senior and veterans' tax work-off benefits and ultimately voted to increase the program limit from $750 to $1,000. At that time, we discussed that we would revisit the limit for this upcoming fiscal year, this spring. So in advance of this evening's meeting, Mr. Hickey gathered information from nearby communities, which was included in our meeting packet, and that reflects a limit range from $750 up to $1,875. So with that said, Mr. Hickey is recommending the board consider increasing the tax work-off limit from $1,000 to $1,250, so $1,250 for the upcoming fiscal year. And just for reference, the funding will continue to be provided through the assessors' overlay account. I did speak briefly with the principal assessor and she does support this increase. I didn't get a chance to find out the results of the assessor's meeting because I believe they discussed it as well today, but she was supportive of this. So if you guys agree with that recommendation, we can move forward with that, otherwise you can discuss.
I move the Board of Select to recommend including a warrant article at the 2024 Spring Town Meeting to increase the senior and veteran tax work-off allowance to $1,250.
Second.
I gave it to Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's 5, 0, 0. And skipping seven because that one's gonna be a bit, we will move to eight. We received an application for a common victular license, which the relevant departments have reviewed and signed off on. So it's before us this evening.
I am very excited about this one. I move to approve the common victular license of Keegan Creations.
Second.
Which is over near Dunkin' Donuts, Dale Dunkin' Donuts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great, so 5, 0, 0, we look forward to that. Alright. It's not 6:15 yet, we're moving right through. How about additional item number one? We have an appointment for consideration. The Conservation Commission currently has two vacant seats and we received an application from a resident to fill one of those vacancies. On February 28th, the Conservation Commission reviewed and voted a favorable recommendation for our consideration on the application. So unless there are questions or concerns, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I would do. I move the Board of Select to appoint Marilyn Cosadoi. Cosadoi, thank you, to the Conservation Commission effective immediately through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. We have a donation to accept.
I move the Board of Select to accept the following donations. $20 donation to benefit the cafe program from Donald Kelly. $300 donation from Barbara Potter to be used for the purchase of a new TV in the library.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for those.
Yes, very generous donations. I don't think this will lead to a lot of discussion, so this might be the last one we can do before the public hearing starts. The review of the draft town meeting articles, so in our last, in our last meeting, I had asked town administrator Hickey to provide us with a list of the articles for the Spring Town Meeting that we're aware of thus far. There will likely be more coming, but if, I was just hoping everyone would take a look at that list. And if you have any questions, just let, let Mr. Hickey know and... Just as a reminder for everybody, March 26th, we are being joined by the Capital Planning Committee as well as Wage and Personnel Board and that is also the night that we close the warrant. So all warrant articles, whether they are from departments or from citizen petitions, are due by March 26th. So just keep that in mind. And I appreciate having the list of articles thus far. I think all of them are fairly self-explanatory. Did anyone have any questions at first glance on the list? I think we have, what, 22 articles so far?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. Did that include the tax work-off? Because we might have just added a 24th.
Twenty-four.
Okay, okay, excellent. And as we learn more, we will share more. And it's still not 6:15. We are just... I guess we need to post these closer together. Like ZBA does 6:01, 6:02, 6:03.
Yep.
Maybe that's what we'll start doing.
Oh yeah, minutes.
Hold on a second, Tricia, I had a couple of edits on the minutes, did they get in the packet? Okay, excellent, perfect, thank you so much. We'll do minutes then.
I move the Board of Select to approve the open session meeting minutes as amended, oh, from January 30th, 2024, as amended in the packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's gonna take me a minute to scroll back up to the top of my notes anyway. The set times are difficult, you can't start before, so I just, I have to wait until it actually, the clock ticks 6:15.
Take my position, save us ten seconds.
There you go. I'm watching it like a hawk. Check your phone, too.
Alright, you're good.
Alright, so, PK Realty Trust is requesting a permit for earth removal. The public hearing was initially opened on December 19th, 2023, where the board heard testimony from the applicant and the public and then it was continued to our meeting on January 16th. But unfortunately, the peer review had not yet been completed at that point, which brings us to this evening. So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna open the, the public hearing.
I move the Board of Select to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, you're standing there, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, absolutely, thanks, Madam Chair and members of the board. Rob Dambrosa for the record, Dambrosa Law in Plymouth. I'm an attorney at law representing PK Realty. Just procedurally, did you guys need to or want to discuss the peer review findings? I'm prepared to discuss them in part, but I don't want to, you know, overstep if you guys need a minute to...
So I think what I would like to do, you stepped up there, so I figured I'd like you to introduce yourself. But I think what I'd like to do is explain to the folks in the room and the folks at home kind of what we've done thus far and then we, I believe we have someone online. I believe Mr. Horsey is online. He may want to speak to that peer review and then I thought maybe you might want to speak.
Perfect, yeah, I'd like to just make some general remarks, address some of those issues and then so would our civil engineer, yep.
And then we may have members of the public that may also want to speak and we have our water commissioners with us this evening as well who may also want to speak. So I thought I would ask you folks to speak maybe after those folks so that way you could respond to any questions that came up.
Makes total sense, thank you.
Okay, so, just so that everyone's on the same page, two peer reviews were completed on this proposal on the town side, the first initiated by the water commissioner, second by the selectmen. Both proposals were included within our packet for this evening and in addition to those reviews, sorry, not proposals, reviews, in addition to those reviews, we also received a letter from the Community Land and Water Coalition. So all that is in our meeting packet for anyone who's interested in looking at that. That said, I don't know if Mr. Horsey would like to speak to his review that he conducted.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Wonderful, and I do have a few slides to walk through my comment letter, if I may share my screen. Let's... And let's see, can you see my first slide here, which is, has my name on it?
Yes.
Yes, we can see that, thank you.
Wonderful, well, thank, thank you for the opportunity to present this and I'll be brief, I'll just walk through a letter. I did review the site plans as well as other documentation provided by the applicant. And I'd just like to walk through that presentation, my, my comment letter. But I will just mention, as I have this opening slide, this is a cranberry bog in the town of Barnstable that I've been working on for the past six years. And it's not a great quality photo, I apologize for that, but the one thing I'd just ask you to take note of is you can see the cranberry bog in the center, you can see a water source in the middle and if you notice off to the sides, the trees indicate the land level. So this is a bog, in my, in my experience, this is the most common type of setting, hydrologic setting for a cranberry bog. I've been living in the region for 40 years and done a lot of work with cranberry bogs. But you can see that the bogs are essentially the same elevation as the trees in the surrounding area, which I, which I want to come back to in my presentation, but I thought I'd point that out in this slide because it is a bog that I've been working on extensively. First and foremost, to introduce myself in terms of qualifications briefly. I do have more than 30 years' experience. Most of my work has been as a consultant to the US EPA under national contracts. I've done a lot of work for the Nature Conservancy, many municipalities, nonprofits, as well as industry. I have been qualified as an expert witness as a hydrologist in federal and state courts. I'll mention here that the federal court case that I was involved in did involve a cranberry, a number of cranberry bogs in the town of Carver relative to the Clean Water Act. The third bullet is a project I've been working on for the past six years and that is the slide I showed you earlier. This is a cranberry bog, or I should say about 150 acres of cranberry bogs in Marson's Mills, a section of the town of Barnstable, where we are looking at a wetland restoration there and water quality impacts. I've served on a number of MassDEP advisory committees and then finally, I do teach as adjunct faculty at both Tufts and Harvard and I'll come back to that in a minute. The, I did get a quick look at one of the rebuttal comment letters that was submitted and, and I added this slide because I think the comment letter suggested that I didn't have any experience in, in the area of cranberry bogs. And this is a copy of the first page of my, my resume, which I did submit with the letter and I gather they didn't read it very closely because in the first sentence, and I've highlighted it, it does say that I've worked, I've been working on this wetland restoration project that I just mentioned to you a couple of minutes ago. And then the first example project, and I think I have about 30 projects in my resume, is in fact, the court case that I also mentioned regarding the cranberry bog. So I believe, hopefully, I've submitted enough information. I don't know that the reviewer got a chance to actually read the entire letter because this was there and it's in the first sentence of the letter. So to the project, these are, I have a few exhibits that I included in my comment letter. And the first one is the location of the project hydrologically and I've just highlighted the general location of this proposed project, a little east, southeast of Indian Pond. And I'm also showing, the base map here is a topographic map that was prepared by the US Geological Survey. The blue lines, our water table contour is showing the direction of groundwater flow. I should also mention that I've been involved in a number of solsource aquifer designations with EPA and this is one of them, the Plymouth Carver Aquifer, which has a federal designation, making it a highly sensitive to contamination issues and that's primarily because of the high permeability of, of the materials, the glacial materials. But back to this map, I've added some arrows here that show the direction of flow, which are perpendicular down gradient from these contours. So you can see that the flow is generally westerly. I believe this was also identified in the applicant's materials, they basically showed the same thing, general flow. But, but what they didn't show is there is a public water supply well, what I would consider directly down gradient from this site. It is in the neighboring town. This is also a map showing assessor's base and this shows the Kingston Plymouth Town Line running through Indian Pond. I did contact the town of Plymouth and Health Agent to ask and determine these lots that I've highlighted along Brook Street and, and she confirmed that these are all private wells, private drinking wells. So we have directly down gradient from the site, both public well, which I've again identified on this exhibit, as well as a series of private drinking water wells. So there's plenty of drinking water to be concerned with in addition to the solsource aquifer designation that I mentioned previously. This is a, a direct excerpt from the applicant's plans and it does show that they are proposing the bottom of the reservoir drink, reservoir system for the project at elevation 126. They're, they're estimating the, estimated seasonal high water table or ESHWT at 122. So they're suggesting it's about four, it's four feet separation. And I'm gonna skip over this project, well, actually, I'll go through it right now. So what I did is looked at the cross-section, which is also provided on the applicant's plans and if you can see my cursor, what I'll do is identify this, there's actually a match line right here because when you look at their detailed plans, the right-hand side of this plan is on a separate than the left side. So I've matched these together the best that I can and I think it's fair enough for approximate elevations. So what this shows is the proposed elevations of the project with the cranberry bogs over the left here and the, the irrigation reservoir on the right, which I just showed you a close-up of. What I did is I simply sketched in a line from the, over here it shows as the existing grade and on the right-hand side as well, there's existing grade here. So what I've done is I've basically sketched a line in here, approximated it to suggest that another possible configurations project would be to keep the cranberry bog close to the surface and I've just shown that with this rectangle here. And, and it would also be possible to have a irrigation reservoir at the surface of the land. Frankly, it would save a lot of money too, which is a consideration in terms of constructing the project. And then on the bottom, what I've done is just highlighted in yellow difference between what they're proposing and, and I think what could be an alternative plan, provide the same area of cranberry bog as well as a, an irrigation pond. Of course, the other obvious irrigation source is the groundwater, it'd be very easy to put a well in here and irrigate the bogs with the well, so that's another option here, which would make the excavation even less. You wouldn't need this excavation here, you could just simply put the bog here and, and get your irrigation water from groundwater. So just to go through my conclusions in my report, and there actually are four of them. The first one is, and I did look at the town's bylaws, the earth removal bylaw, and my interpretation is as follows. Regarding Chapter 12, Article 7, which states that a permit shall, shall be granted only after finding that the earth removal is both necessary and incidental. So again, the cross-section that I just showed you suggests to me that it is not necessary, that there could be a project that would be constructed with significantly less excavation. And certainly, the, the irrigation pond incidental to the use would still be at that higher elevation. So I think that therefore, the project does not comply with Article 7 of Chapter 12. My second conclusion is that it also does not comply with Article 9 of Chapter 12. Article 9 states that the board shall exercise its powers with due regard, health, safety, and welfare. Inhabitants, I'll paraphrase here, protection detriment of the neighborhood. And I've just underlined, I think, the key terms here, pollution, protection of natural resources, and then water sources and wetlands. I'll just go back for a minute to the Solsource Act for Designation, for those not familiar. This designation is part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, which is our national law on drinking water. And the Sol, the Solsource Designation was put in place by Congress to identify critical areas that deserve extra protection across the United States. And this area, Plymouth Carver Aquifer is one of those, another one is the Cape Cod Aquifer. There's also one on Martha's Vineyard, et cetera, so, but, but clearly this area is, has, has received that designation. Part of my work for EPA over the 30 years that I've worked for them has been to develop guidance documents for the, for the EPA Office of Groundwater and Drinking Water. And what we did is prepared guidance documents on how to protect groundwaterers, particularly in highly sensitive areas such as the Solusaurus. Some of the guidelines for protection would be to maintain as much depth of groundwater as possible because the, the soil, the, the distance between the land surface or a, or a land use and the water table is invariably related to the vulnerability of the system, meaning the closer you get to the water table, the higher the potential. So the guidance from the, at the national level is to maximize that, that, really call it an unsaturated zone, the vertical distance between the, the surface of the land and the water table. And again, I don't think this project is doing that, so therefore, I don't think it meets the, the, the standard here in Article 9. And then number three, Article 12 indicates that no excavation shall be within 10 feet of the high water table. And I just showed you in the plan, this one shows an excavation down to within four feet of the plan. And then I think my last slide is that the, the applicant's submission to the town suggests that part of the project here is to provide a teaching opportunity for a sustainable or ecological agricultural practice. And again, I do teach at both Tufts and Harvard. One of the courses that I teach, in fact, I'm teaching it right now, is called Low Impact Development. I've been directly involved in helping the state MassDEP develop their standards on what LID is and sustainability. And from my perspective, I do not believe this project would be a good teaching study for a number of reasons. First of all, the excessive removal of vegetation, the excessive re-grading. One of the stand, one of the most common LID sustainable site development principles is to maintain the natural topography of the site. And this project couldn't be further from that standard. So along, along with the vegetation removal, the grading, I, I can't imagine why this would be a good project for educating students in sustainability. I certainly would not take my students on a field trip here to illustrate either sustainability or LID principles. That's just my own opinion as someone who's quite invested in these practices. So, Madam Chair, I will stop there and see if you or others have any questions and if you, I guess I'll take my slides down unless you'd like me to leave them up.
No, you can take the slides down, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Horsey? I'm gonna have you rebut, I think, after the, even the water commissioners get to speak and everything. That way you can cover everything you want to cover all at once, if that's okay. It might be a little bit, you might, you might want to sit down. But you're welcome to turn the chair around if you want to make yourself a little desk or something because I know it's tough to write in these chairs. Does anyone from the Board have any questions for Mr. Horsey? No? Okay, thank you so much for providing that and for the slides as well.
You're welcome.
Did the, I know we received information from the water commissioners as well, did they, did you all want to speak on this? Or do you feel like your memo encompasses the inform? I don't know yet, maybe, let's see what he says. I don't know yet, maybe, let's see what he says.
I'm Bob Relanson, 99 Monk's Hill Road, and Vice Chair of the Water Commission. We stand by our comments we sent in before, where we have some serious concerns about the hydrology effects that this is going to happen. Lot of unknowns there. We, it just seems a little bit over the top, a bit. So we'll stand by our comments as before, but as a citizen, I do have something I want to add, as an educator as well, science teacher, and I'll kind of reiterate what Mr. Horsley said there with the teaching aspects of this. When you're creating a lesson plan, you generally don't, you know, do it as hard as possible. I think the goal of this, to make it a teachable bog, there's so many bogs that are out there already that aren't doing so well, that I think could be used in that. So I don't see that as being a primary goal. To me, that seems secondary. And that's where I have an issue, that all this is going to be done for those reasons. I ask you to consider that when you're making your decisions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to issuing the permit?
I'm Richard Loring Jr., Chairman of the Water Commission. I'm speaking here tonight as an individual who has lived his entire life in this town, born and brought up just down the street from where we stand to sit tonight. I question extensively the ability to take an area like this and convert it into an educational experience, sort of irrespective of how much time the applicant has as far as a second-generation cranberry grower, just for a little bit of history. My family, the Edgar W. Loring Company, started growing cranberries in the late 1800s. We ceased growing cranberries ourselves and leased it out, because we couldn't find anybody within the family that wanted to continue farming cranberries, because farming cranberries is not something that you can do part-time, you can't do it as an occasional, educational experience. It needs to be something that you dedicate your life to. There are bogs in the Town of Kingston right now for sale, because of the grower finally realizing that at 80-plus years old, he can't do it anymore. They are pristine. If, in fact, the town decides to buy them for conservation, they will look like the other bogs that the town has bought for conservation purposes, where they've reverted back to its natural environment, which is a good thing, because that's what's happened. We've had growers in town try to create pure cranberry bogs, organic cranberry bogs, and each time that's happened in town, they have failed. They have failed because there is not a market. It's very interesting today in the Globe, there was quite an extensive article about the restoration of approximately 100 acres of cranberry bogs on Nantucket. The reason it's occurring, and the reason that it's being turned back into its natural environment, is that the environment that is necessary to grow cranberries, cold winter weather, is basically a result of climate change and does not, you know, the climate in the United States doesn't support it so. Excuse me, I know that we have important phone calls here. Maybe it's your grower calling, who knows? But that's beside the point. It's important to realize that the cranberry industry is moving. Massachusetts used to be the predominant cranberry area in the country and in the world. We are no longer there. It's moved to Wisconsin, Minnesota, Connecticut, I mean, Canada, and also, a great deal of the larger growers are now spending their money building cranberries in South America, where the environment is roughly equal to what the environment is in Wisconsin. Labor is extremely cheap, and environmental concerns are nonexistent for the most part. So to suggest that this is a place to create a environmental environment, to grow cranberries part-time for cuddle cushioning students, I really question. And it really appears to me, this is nothing more than a gravel removal permit. And as Bob stated, and as Mr. Horsley stated, the plans sort of indicate that it's going to be below the 10-foot minimum requirement, and it even in their reports is, if it happens, we'll build a clear layer. Well, if they're going to build a clear layer, build that clear at the elevation that Mr. Horsley has suggested, and not rape and pillage the Town of Kingston. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Dana Dupree, 8 Everon Path, Kingston, Mass. My mother was a Holmes. We've had a Holmes camp on Indian Pond, two parcels of land, for close to 100 years. And I'm worried that with the flow of water that's going out of that area, that the pond is going to dry up. Cotta has been, since Dr. Adelani, has been taking out of that pond for their bogs. What if that dries up? Where are we, and where are they at? I mean, it's surrounded by private owners, and we're all going to be stuck. So it's time we bring this town to realize that, you know, we can be a little bit, instead of reactive, we can be proactive.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the permit? Anyone online? Okay. Would you like to rebut? Or would you like?
If you want, we can do that. I was going to ask for that last. I was going to let you to, let you respond.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
So again, I'm stepping in.
Oh, sorry, is the microphone off? You should check and see if that little green button's on. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, again, Rob Dambrosio for the record. So again, let me sort of try to frame where we're coming from, and we'll do our best to respond to some of the concerns, which we certainly appreciate. So again, clearly, there are some reservations expressed by some bodies about this project. I had the chance to speak with Ms. Massard, Mr. Hickey, and, you know, took their temperature on it. So, you know, I understand that there's some concerns and reservations, so, you know, our job is to see, can we get you comfortable with the project, and are the concerns legitimate? At least, that's what I see my role as. So again, I think that first, first of all, maybe not foremost, but it bears mentioning that, you know, there is an earth removal chapter of the general town bylaw. So there may be a bias against earth removal, which I'm not making a moral judgment one way or the other on that, but some people are opposed to it just as a policy matter, and I understand that. But the inquiry, I think, for this board is whether or not this project can and does comply with the criteria within the bylaw. And some of those issues have been spoken to, but I think that's, you know, really the question. If someone were to try to ban gravel and earth removal outright, you know, that would be done, obviously, through town meeting and a bylaw amendment. But we have an earth removal bylaw for a reason. It does permit earth removal in connection with agriculture, of course. So again, in terms of the landscape of earth removal projects, and what the typical issues are, you know, viewed as being associated with these projects, I would, I'd like to say, I think this is actually a sound project for a number of reasons. You know, for starters, we have no traffic. A lot of the time with earth removal, a primary concern of the permitting bodies is, how many truckloads a day are coming off of this? How much wear and tear will they put on the roadways? Are they going to be a nuisance to citizens as they travel past? Will they interfere with school buses? You know, will the noise be a distraction? Will there be dust? You know, those are many of the principal objections to these projects. We're fortunate with this site, that all of the material is going to come out, actually across the town line to Plimpton, and is never even going to touch a town road. So I think that's a huge element that is often an issue with these types of projects. You know, in terms of nuisance, which is another kind of principal objection, we're fortunate that we don't really have a butters, for the most part. Now, we did hear from Mr. Dupree, and he's got a cottage on the pond, understood. That's, I don't know how far away Bill could probably hazard a guess, but probably 1,000-plus.
Throw a stone to it.
Not to the land, maybe to the property line, but, you know, I don't think to the project site. Anyhow, on the other three sides, we've got the Town of Plimpton, the highway, and, you know, and the pond. So again, we're not in a residential neighborhood despite being in R-80 zone, which, again, is a beneficial factor for a project like this. You know, I think, again, it kind of goes without saying, but cranberry farming, which is going to be the end result here, you know, now again, maybe folks don't care for how we get there, but that's going to be what this will be, that's by its very nature, a low-intensity use. It's a low-density use, it's a low-intensity use. If you guys are probably all familiar to some degree, I'm going to guess, being, living in Kingston, with the level of activity in a cranberry bog, it's seasonal and it's sparse. I actually happen to live on a cranberry bog myself. I back right up to one. I could throw a frisbee into the bog from my backyard. You know, they're out there a handful of times a year. It's a low-impact use, you know, and again, it's not a drain on the town fisc. There's really no, but there's no use of town services, you know, there's no education. I think it really is a favorable use from an economic standpoint for a town, as compared to other uses in particular. And again, when you look at the density of this project, we've got a 47-acre site. We're proposing a 4.38-acre bog with an associated tailwater recovery pond slash irrigation pond, that's about half the size of the cranberry bog. That's a very small footprint for a 47-acre site. Now, compare that to, you know, maybe a more typical use for a residential 47-acre site, you know, most developer, for instance, would try to stack a bunch of houses in there. And I think you've got a world of difference between, you know, traffic, impact on the environment, certainly, you know, septic systems, emissions, you know, land clearing. I mean, it's a totally different world. Not only that, when the bog's finished, you've got effectively open space. You've got a farm with a budding upland that's effectively not used for any purpose. You've got almost all pervious surface, you know, so you've really got a meritorious project, in my opinion, from a land use standpoint, okay? So, and again, I think I'll just mention one other thing, you know, the applicant is certainly happy to accept all standard conditions. Phasing, you know, we're going to do it in phases, we'll stabilize the banks and plant the bogs as we go along, so there's not going to be an open pit, which I know is a concern. Again, that's certainly a no-go and not anyone's intention. So it's going to be done in phases, and it's going to be a bog. There's not this concern that we're going to take sand and gravel and leave a pit. That's not going to be the case, because we're doing it in phases as we go. You know, and again, a lot of the transportation-related criteria really don't even apply to this project, which is fortunate, the typical conditions about transport. Again, notwithstanding the foregoing, I think it does make sense to speak to some of the points that were raised by Mr. Horsley, the water commissioners, their consultant. I'll let Bill Madden, our civil engineer, talk about the more technical items, but let me touch on a couple of the more things that are in my wheelhouse, I'd call them kind of legal points. So necessary and incidental, Mr. Horsley touched on that, a special interest group filed a letter that touched on that, I think the water commissioners touched on it, you know, is it necessary and incidental? So again, that's within your discretion, effectively. That's what Chapter 12 of the bylaws provides. Now, you know, the Horsley letter basically says it's not necessary and incidental, but doesn't quite say why. I guess the contention is you could do it at a higher elevation. But, you know, I would say, it's not far-fetched to say this is, that earth removal is necessary and incidental. Not only do we have topography that needs to be addressed, but right in your bylaw, I'm going to quote directly, "The Board of Selectmen may issue an earth removal permit when it determines that such earth removal is incidental to and necessary for the following purposes." There's an A and a B. B is construction or operation of customary agricultural use. So again, this isn't a stretch. It says in your bylaw, as an example of what's necessary and incidental, agriculture. So, you know, this is, it's not some pie-in-the-sky concept that this is necessary or incidental to agriculture. And again, along those lines, the earth removal is transient. That's a temporary activity. It's done in phases, but it's done. Then you've got cranberry bogs that, you know, in many cases are farmed for generations, 100-plus years. So, you know, when you talk about incidental, it is incidental. It's a fleeting activity that allows a cranberry bog to be constructed on the site. One other element, again, more of a technical item in Mr. Horsley's letter, he, I think it's his point number four, he talks about the Kingston Wetlands Regulations and says that "any activity undertaken outside and beyond the 100-foot area shall not be subject to regulation unless in the judgment of the Conservation Commission it's resulted or likely resulted in altering an area subject to protection." That, I think, should be disregarded by the Board. It's citing wetland regs, which have been resolved by the Conservation Commission, the DEP. So that, in my view, is certainly off the table. You know, and it even says "in the judgment of the Conservation Commission," so I'm not sure why that's being presented to you as if it's your concern. There was a special interest group, Community Land and Water Coalition, I think Ms. Sheen's on the Zoom here. Again, I'll just touch on two points that she made. So one is, the zoning bylaw prohibits earth removal in the R-80 district. That's incorrect, and it's also the building inspector's discretion on zoning matters, right? So he makes a determination, or has the wherewithal to make a determination about whether or not an activity is permitted from a zoning standpoint. You know, respectfully, that's not what's before this board tonight, and it's just not relevant to the general bylaw, which is the basis for your analysis of the project. One other very kind of haywire assertion that I think just bears a response, the Community Land Water Coalition letter asserts, and I'm going to quote, "Courts have denied every earth removal project claiming to be agriculture." That's a very misleading and categorically false statement. Now, she does go onto site, or the coalition does go onto site, four cases, two of which are expounded upon, the other two, I'm not sure why they were submitted, but the two that she does reference, Henry v. Board of Appeals of Dunstable, and Old Colony Council Boy Scouts versus the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals. In both those cases, the applicant came before a board like yours and was denied a permit, and then appealed, and ended up in Superior Court, seeking an override, effectively saying, "I'm exempt as agriculture, I don't need a permit." That's not what we're doing here. So those are completely, they're non sequitur, they're irrelevant. We're respecting the process, we're before you with a duly filed application, and we're not seeking an agricultural exemption. So that's just completely misguided, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was disabused of the notion that those are, that's a legitimate kind of legal analysis from Community Land and Water Coalition. So with that, I would like to yield the floor to Mr. Madden, our civil engineer, and let him address some of the more technical items to the best of his ability. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Bill Madden. I'm the owner and the principal engineer of GAF Engineering. My office is located at 266 Main Street in Wareham. I've had the benefit and opportunity to be a designer and permitter of cranberry bogs all throughout southeastern Massachusetts, done a bunch out of state, I've done several in Canada, I've been a consultant overseas in Scotland. I have specific expertise in the design and permitting of cranberry bogs, wherever they may be. Begins at an initial site inspection, a site assessment, you know, look for the resources that are necessary to construct a bog, look for the resources that are necessary to maintain it, and make some, you know, assessments as to whether or not a site is suitable for the construction of a bog. And technically speaking, pretty much any site can be adapted for cranberry cultivation. It's just a question of moving some material, developing a water supply, ensuring that there's a supply of sand available, and things of that nature. There's some physical features that you need to be sure exist in those regards. But one of the things that Mr. Horsley brought up, and, you know, basically questioned whether or not we read his resume, and, you know, of course, I read the resume and what have you, and the two things that he points to, those are exist, one was an existing bog, another one was a very, very, very serious EPA violation, had to do with construction and permitting and environmental infractions. It's not designed. My letter was very clear. I spoke specifically to design, because design is different than evaluation of a construction activity, an evaluation of a wetland violation, or things of that nature. So I was very specific, and I just wanted you to understand the significance of the experience that I have in the design of these projects. I mean, I've done, I can't even recall how many we've done, but it not only involved... but it not only involves just the cranberry bog design. It also involves permitting with the wetlands groups at DEP and in the municipalities. It also involves Water Management Act permitting. So when the water department speaks about water usage and demands and things like it, pretty well versed in all those. Every one, every cranberry bog project you do nowadays that has over nine acres requires a Water Management Act permit because you're going to use a hundred thousand gallons a day. In addition to that, because you need that state permit, you meet a MEPA threshold. And the MEPA threshold is use of a hundred thousand gallons a day. So consequently, when we apply and design a cranberry bog over, let's just say nine acres, nine and a half acres for the sake of ease, it gets reviewed at the MEPA level. Every state agency is involved with the review of these projects. Dozens upon dozens of these projects have been designed, permitted and reviewed by DEP. Don't recall where, in any instance, um, one being designed. I'm sorry, being, being, not being approved by the DEP for a Water Management Act permit and not being constructed. It's another comment that people, um, have made that these are simply just not even projects. It's just a sand removal, not the case at all. These projects get built, they all get built. I happen to like big projects. I like fifty acre and up projects. You know, I've been responsible for the largest project in the state of Maine. We never, never did a project in the state of Maine, but we designed four hundred acres up there. Water supply, cranberry bogs, all the things. First large project ever in the state scrutinized very closely by, by Maine DEP. So, you know, we have some real significant experience in the design, in the design of these things. And not only the design, but also evaluating other, other sites. So I just wanted to point that out, that I acknowledge that Mr. Horsley, what he did, but it's a far cry from designing, designing a cranberry bog. Similarly, it's not a low impact development project at all. It's not residential development, it's not commercial development. It's, it's a, it's an earth removing, earth moving project with the end result as a cranberry bog. There's really not too many low impact development standards that are implemented on a cranberry bog. There are however, many best management practices that one should employ when you construct those. Um, you know, another thing that I did, I was the chairman of the Plymouth County Conservation District for about seven years. We were the, we were the first body to bring farm planners into southeast Mass, southeastern Massachusetts. We hired them, they worked directly for the Plymouth County Conservation District and the Natural Resource Conservation Service in Wareham at the time. So, you know, we've been involved really grassroots level with the grower, in the regulators, and I have a very clear understanding of what is necessary to build a bog and how one goes about permitting one of these projects. Um, you know, we do recognize that it is in, a portion of the site is in the sole source aquifer. Sole source aquifer is two hundred square miles, holds five, five hundred billion gallons of water. The sole source aquifer transmits almost three hundred million gallons a day through it, most of which travel through the aquifer and are discharged at the ocean or into surface, surface waters or streams. There's a very small amount of water that is actually form, that begins as a precipitation event that finds its way to the groundwater table. We have a use with cranberries that's effectively a non-consumptive use. Water usage in a cranberry bog is, is not flushed down a toilet. It's not discharged to a drainage ditch that goes to the ocean or to a stream. It's, it's reused. There's a number of steps in a cranberry project that reuses water. We like to think that cranberry projects have a tendency to be water conservation, um, measures in large respect. And that's, that's what we truly believe. And with the, with the implementation of the best management practices, you get a project that's an environmentally sensitive and designed project. One thing that we look at is the, the creation of a, a perched wetland. And when you look at the design plans, the design plans are pretty clear. We, we construct a bog with a slowly permeable confining layer and an organic confining layer, all for the purpose of mimicking wetland conditions where the cranberry vines are going to go. Because they are a wetland plant. They're a water dependent wetland plant. They require water and they require the use of the water, not the consumption of it. One of the things that we were looking at when, well, that Mr. Horsley looked at when he critiqued the design, he, he shows a design and he didn't, he didn't show a water source at all. Well, the water dependent plant requires the water. There was none shown on the plan, although he did, um, indicate that it may be useful to, um, or an option to use a, a well in lieu of, of a reservoir. Our reservoir that we were hoping to use to build here on this site was going to be one that would be elevated above the water table. It was not going to intercept the water table as customarily done. And what we wanted to do was have our site drainage drain into the basin, which was lined with clay for the purpose of retention of the water that, the surface water runoff that was going to be discharged into the, into the pond. So that's why we showed it in that particular, in that particular manner. We needed, I like to use three acres of land for every acre foot of water that I want to store in a, in a reservoir. It's a design consideration that I found to work when needed. So that was, um, one of the reasons why we showed the plan the way it was. And as far as the excavation to within ten feet of the water table, we thought that by placing that confining layer in the reservoir, that that could serve as mitigation for the groundwater separation. We're certainly happy to go back and reevaluate, um, how we're handling the water supply element of the project and see what we can do to, um, to change that. Consequently, that would change some of the, uh, the water withdraw, I'm sorry, the, the earth removal that was originally proposed as, as part of the project. So I think there's an opportunity to, um, to evaluate the site from, from a little bit of a different perspective to help achieve some of the, uh, the goals you might be setting out to, to, um, to, to achieve on this. As far as the, as far as the construction standards go, I think that the, the, there was questions that were brought up as far as the timeframe and why it would take so long to, to complete the project. I think that when I proposed the project originally, one of the things that I felt was important to do was show that we could meet the bylaw with your construction standards. You have very rigid construction standards. You want only five acres open at one time. There's restoration requirements for the first, for three acres of that before you can move into the, to the next five acre area. So there was a lot of steps that needed to be taken in order to meet your two hundred thousand yards per year removal requirement and also meet the land restriction requirement of five acres. I think that we can complete the project in less time if we were able to obtain a waiver for the construction element of the project. If we were able to, to perhaps have more than five acres open, maybe vary the, the permit in some degree that just facilitates the excavation, construction and building in a, in a manner that expedites the process as opposed to a manner that just really drags it out because I think the regulations were just, are set up to, to minimize the impact to the surface of the land. So those are a couple of things that I just wanted to point out, um, with, with respect to that. As far as the down green public water supply wells and the private water supply wells, what I did is I, I didn't, I didn't locate the wells on a, on a plan. But what I did is I prepared an overview just to give some context to where this project sits on the face of the earth. I don't know if anybody really knows how it, you know, how it fits with the existing features of the land. I'd like to show it to you if, if you want to see it. I have it on, on a board. Is that something that could help?
I've seen it many times.
Well, I don't think I've seen this plan because I just prepared it last week.
And they've been sixty years.
So what we did is just took a Google, a Google map, just show what we have for surrounding areas, just to give some context to, um, to the site. Indian Pond is to the south. Our project is located here adjacent to, um, Route forty-four, adjacent to the, to the Cisco site. And you might know that the Cisco site is thirty-five acres of basically impervious area right in, pretty much against the, uh, the town line in, in Route forty-four. There's also an ever-source transmission line, a very large ever-source transmission line that traverses, um, across a portion of the property, crossing a portion of the property of, uh, Plimpton Sandy Gravel. It also continues, continues down to Brook Street. So you can just see that there's, you know, the area that we're looking to work is, is right in the southwest portion of our site. But it's, it's really surrounded by, um, more industrial. Sorry, uh, more industrial type, uh, uses. You'll see solar sites, you'll see the Cisco site, you'll see the transmission line and you'll see the, the pond of, um, of Indian Pond. Indian Pond is a sixty-six acre pond. Uh, Mr. Horsley wrote in his letter that it's hydrologically connected to the groundwater system. I think that when, if you looked in the plan set, we have a, a set of boreings that we did on the site. We, we had a drilling rig go out there, we drilled some boreings. We obtained groundwater elevations because your regulations say the annual water table or water table satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen. So in our, in our minds, we thought that perhaps we go out there and do some drilling, come up with some firm numbers. We also understood that there, there was a hydrological connection between the pond and the groundwater system. And the boreings that we have shown on the plan, um, essentially match the water elevation of the pond. And it confirms that it is, um, hydrologically connected. But it also confirms what the elevation of the groundwater might be in that area. We know where it is where we drilled and it's pretty much the same elevation of the pond. The report identifies what those, what those elevations are. You might also note that over here to the east, there's a cranberry bog system. There's an outlet from that cranberry bog system. So this shallow pond, which is roughly three feet in depth, um, drains out through that, through that outlet.
That hasn't been drained for years.
Dana, Dana, can you let him? Thank you.
So we like to, you know, I think that that's an outlet, that's an outlet that's available for that pond. There's some irrigate, there's some irrigation ponds shown across that cranberry bog acreage. But in any event, it's, it's not isolated one hundred percent with, with the groundwater system. So we wanted to show that because the, the reports and the letters from your review, the review consultants further said that we're excavating and doing, conducting earth removal at the perimeter of Indian Pond. We're nowhere near Indian Pond, we're six hundred feet away from it. It's noted directly on the plan that the work, construction activities are not closer than six hundred feet from the, from the pond edge. Further examination of the site, if anybody has, has been on this site, you know, the drainage or the overland flow of surface water runoff that results from precipitation, it doesn't, it doesn't drain directly to Indian Pond. There's a cart path right around the perimeter of Indian Pond. And if you walk on that cart path, you'll note that it's, in most instances at least, two feet lower than the adjacent ground, both to the east and west. I don't know, but gravity would prevail and I don't think the water would overflow the banks of that, of that, of that cart path and find its way into the, find its way into the pond. So there were a couple of inconsistencies with the, with the site features and the reviews that took place that pointed out things like that, that, you know, weren't necessarily, necessarily accurate. I did reply to those, um, all those letters. I know that we shipped them off to the town late, late today. Apologize for the tardiness, um, on that. But it was, um, it's just what it took to, to deal with it. And the only thing that we did have is we do have a water resource protection line on the plan. The Water Resource Protection District, um, does not allow excavation to within ten feet of the historic high water table elevation. There is no history on this site, there's nothing been there, ever constructed on the site. So there's no real historic information there. There are however, USGS wells, both observation, observation wells and, um, public drinking water wells that have some, um, some information relative to the historic, the historic high water table elevation. I would think that, given the opportunity to make a modification to the plan, we would likely look at trying to move that project away from the Water Resource Protection District boundary. As it's shown on the plan, the cranberry bog is not constructed within that resource area or that, that area, nor is the, nor is the irrigation reservoir. There is some site grading out there adjacent to it, but that's in the slope of the, of the ground. So I think that it's fairly well isolated, um, fairly well isolated from any, any, any water with respect to the Water Resource Protection District. Couple of other things like that that we had. There were, um, there were just some comments that were made relative to, um, you know, how that drainage is going to handle, be handled, which I think I spoke direct to, to exactly. And, um, you said, oops, I'm sorry. And that's pretty much, uh, what I have on those things. But in any event, we think the project fits within the, within the site. We think it fits within the framework of the regulations. And I think that after you have an opportunity to review and, and read our responses to the, uh, the letters prepared from the water department and prepared by, um, the water department, their consultant, Mr. Horsley, you'll see the points that, that we have made with respect to the, respect to the project. So that's pretty much what I have on the, uh, on the, on the cranberry bog design side of it. And, um, happily answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does anyone have, what? Oh, okay. Just a second. Anyone on the board have any questions? Looks like we might have a tiny dialogue between the two of you. We'll see how this goes. Uh, Mr. Horsley is raising his hand.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I guess I just have one question that I didn't hear in the applicant's presentation. The bylaw clearly states that the excavation has to be demonstrated to be necessary for the project. So I guess my question through you, Madam Share, would be, why couldn't a bog be, uh, designed and built at the, at the, at or near the existing grade? Why is this much excavation required to have a cranberry bog on the site? There are plenty of cranberry bogs that are at grade or close to grade. So that's, I guess that's a question that seems to me as sort of an important one with regard to the earth removal bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, that site is, is, is steep and it has, steep in, I don't know. It's really steep topography. It's up and down. I don't think that you would have a flat, level area to work in. Regardless of how the project would need to move forward, um, you have to level that ground out. You know, we have significant grade change from low points and high points. There's a drainage area plan delineated. You can see that there's a number of three, four and five acre areas that, you know, have, have topography that range from two, elevation two hundred down to one hundred, to elevation one twenty-five. I mean, there's seventy-five feet of grade change just within. I mean, there's seventy-five feet of grade change just within pockets on the site. It is, it's not rolling topography. I think it's just steep, hilly topography. So regardless, we would need to conduct a significant amount of earth removal for the project. And my experience is that, you know, we generally don't, we don't build them up above existing grade. I don't know why those were done that way. There could be a very, very simple reason. Usually it involves drainage. If you can't drain the site, if there's no relief, then many times they do get elevated so that we can provide proper drainage relief from the site. But it would still involve a fair amount of earth removal and earth work. Soil's out there, not the best in the world. The soil logs on the plan would indicate that to you. So there would be a need to manipulate that soil to a pretty significant degree, not much different than the plan that's presented.
Kim, I have a question.
Sure.
So I think along those lines, obviously you're saying that there's a lot of change in elevation there. Rather than removing the earth, couldn't you just spread it out so that the hills are filling the valleys and whatnot? I haven't actually been on the land, so I can't comment, but...
Yeah, there's instances where that can be done. Developing of the water supply and implementing best management practices such as tailwater recovery. You know, you still would need to have an excavated basin to capture our surface water runoff that would be derived from the site and also to place our tailwater. It was intended to be an organic cranberry bog, so there's no inorganic compounds used in fertilizers or agrochemicals. But tailwater is a water conservation measure. And, you know, we would always like to have the opportunity to provide a tailwater recovery system of some sort so that we could use the water on more than one occasion. So that would involve, that would involve the need to excavate down into the ground or establish grades whereby we could establish a basin to receive the surface water runoff and the tailwater.
Does that help, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the permit being granted? I don't believe Ms. Sheehan is raising her hand to speak in favor of the project. It's just a guess, but I do see her hand raised. But anyone else in favor to speak? No one? Okay. Anyone online like to speak in favor of the project? Okay, all right. Ms. Sheehan, did you have a question or a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Brief question for the applicant. The cases that we cited address the definition of incidental. What is an incidental land use? And as our memorandum explains, it has to be subordinate to the primary use. And one of the factors that the court looked to in those cases that we cited is what is the profit to be made from the primary use of the land here, which is residential, as compared to this allegedly incidental use of earth removal? So can the applicant explain that economic calculation? What will be made from the earth removal operation or eventually the alleged cranberry bog operation?
I think you actually spoke to this in the last hearing. Believe, what was the?
I believe it was fifteen million.
Is that? Nope, too high.
That was her number.
Too, oh, that was her number, okay. All right, hold on, I have my notes. They are, let's see, what do we have? Estimate? That was her number. You estimated, I believe, three million due to what you said, the poor quality of material. Those, I think, were your words from the meeting on December nineteenth.
It said eight phases for the project, two hundred thousand yards for each phase, one point five million yards, one thousand yards per day.
So I believe you had estimated at the time three million. Do you believe that estimate to still be approximately accurate? Whoever might know the answer to that.
I think that it's a reasonable estimate. It's still, it's still maybe a little on the high side, to be honest with you. For the material, the material by the soil boring logs that we have shown on the plan, it's not, it's not that, it's not very good quality. It will take a lot of work to really make it into a product that's saleable. There's a cost associated with that. One thing we do know is that a cranberry bog, when it's in place, will be producing income for over a hundred years. I mean, that's what they typically, they typically last, or are in production for a while. And sometimes the production, the cranberry vines are actually changed to a more productive vine to increase the values. There are some cranberry growers that are currently doing that right now. But the also, part of the equation plays into the time that it takes to execute the project. And the time that it takes to execute the project is really predicated on the bylaw. The bylaw tells us how we shall execute the project, how we're going to sever that material from the land. And given an opportunity to perhaps, you know, fine-tune the construction sequence of things, we could significantly reduce the construction period, and that would increase the, that would increase the value of the project over time to the applicant. You know, time is one thing, the value of the material is another. And we haven't calculated it out. I mean, what's the price of cranberries going to be in fifty years? I have no idea. What's the inflation rate going to be? We can figure out. We've done it in the past, and we've been able to prove just really by the life of the finished project that it exceeds the value of the material that one would retrieve from the project during excavation.
I have a question just related to the traffic. Both in December as well as this evening, there was discussion of no traffic. So the trucks navigate, and you can point on that map if you'd like, but they navigate along the uneasement essentially, right, to the processing facility. But then the material has to leave that at some point, right? So, I mean, you're processing one million, one hundred thousand, five hundred cubic yards of material, and then it needs to go somewhere, correct, eventually? So there will be trucks on the other end of that that go somewhere and use roads. So I just, we talk about how there's no traffic, but, I mean, it does produce material. Material gets processed, and then the trucks go somewhere, wherever they go.
But in the context of earth removal, the truck traffic is typically that of on the local streets, leaving the site, going to a primary destination. You know, the benefit of having a facility to process the material immediately adjacent to the removal site and no need to go over a public way, it's very significant. The business that exists there now exists in another town. It's been there for a number of years. They have a proven track record of what they do and how they do it. And to my knowledge, there has not been anything negative that's occurred on that site. And as it relates to earth removal and the earth removal regulations, I think that we clearly meet the, you know, the traffic concerns and the concerns associated with, you know, school buses, public roads, things of that nature.
Okay. Any other questions?
Quick question. So it's forty-seven acres. The cranberry bog is going to be five of the acres?
Yes.
Four of the acres?
Four point three eight.
Of the forty-seven acres?
Well, it's, the entire parcel is like forty-one point one acres. The area that we've designated for the cranberry bog project is thirty-five acres. So we've taken an area, the most sensitive area, the area that has the wetlands on it. We went to DEP, we obtained a superseding determination of applicability, and it also showed, that also showed our wetland boundary on the plan. And we're six hundred feet at minimum away from the pond. So what we did is consciously said, we don't want to work anywhere near the pond. We want to be as far away from it as we can be and still execute our project. So that area has really been left as it is. And our site that we're hoping to use is thirty-five acres of upland, of which twenty-one point two acres will be altered.
Okay. Question? Any other questions? Any other comments from the public? Oh, we have two. Whomever. Oh, you have to, sorry, you have to, you know the, you know the drill.
Just one comment where they talk about truck traffic. All of you on the board, I've lived in town all my life. To listen to the residents of Elm Street and the abundance and complaints about the heavy truck traffic that uses Elm Street to reach Route Three, both north and southbound, will have a direct impact as a result of this. You know, whether we like to call Plimpton Sand and Gravel in Plimpton, we can. Plimpton Sand and Gravel is on Elm Street. Elm Street leads to Brook Street, which leads to Route Three, north and south. What we're going to do, or what if they're permitted to do it, is we're going to find additional heavy truck traffic. These are going to be eighteen-wheelers, these are going to be cement trucks. That type of vehicle is going to use, you know, Elm Street, Brook Street, Main Street, up to the school as a regular way of traffic to the major highway, which is Route Three. They can say that they're going to go out Route 44. They may, some of them. But the bulk of traffic right now uses Elm Street, Brook Street, and Main Street in order to get to Route Three, both northbound and southbound. I just, by way of traffic, I've been around traffic for a while. I spent about forty-five years working for the Boston Transportation Department, so I know a little bit of what I talk about, sort of like a little bit of the cranberry industry.
Matt Pennella, Conservation Agent, not a Kingston resident. I just want to clarify something. The applicant's reps have been talking about a superseding determination. That superseding determination is only applicable to the state permit that was issued by the Conservation Commission. So basically, an RDA was filed, which is a request for determination of applicability, and the Conservation Commission then issues two permits. Both of those are called determinations of applicability. One is issued under the WPA, which is the State Wetlands Protection Act. The other one is issued under KWPR or the Kingston Wetland Bylaw and Regulations. So they did bring a request to have DEP supersede, which they did. And they essentially overturned the commission's determination based under the Wetlands Protection Act, which is less protective of wetland resource areas than our local bylaw does. There was language in the DEP response that understood why the commission did what they did, but they did overturn it because the Wetlands Protection Act does not have the same protection that our local does. They filed something to appeal the local, but then, as far as I've been told by counsel, that filing was never complete. So without having a court overturn the DOA that was issued under KWPR, that's still valid. There is still essentially a permit that was issued. There was no work shown. This was just a filing that basically said, hey, look at this area. Tell us if this area is in your jurisdiction or not. So the wetland line was reviewed, walked the whole site to check for vernal pools, and then the determination that the commission issued was, you know, yes, the area that you've shown us is outside of our jurisdiction, but since you haven't shown any work, if there's any work, paraphrasing, obviously I don't have it right in front of me, but essentially what it says is that if there's any clearcutting, bulldozing, sand mining, earth removal, that those activities would have to be reviewed by the Conservation Commission in order to be acceptable under KWPR. So as far as I have for information, that's all still valid. So when they say that DEP is superseded and that has in some way determined all of the wetland protection liability, that's not true. The local bylaw determination is still in effect.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Any questions? Any additional last comments? You look like you stood up.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to make a closing remark. If you guys are done with your public deliberation for now, I want to cut you off.
Well, you, yeah, do that, and then we'll probably close the public hearing if nobody jumps up.
Yeah. So, you know, I guess that, you know, procedurally, it's unclear to me if we're winning hearts and minds tonight, you know, among the board anyway. So, you know, I think it would make sense to us, well, let me preface it. I think we should probably try to take another whack at this. Because, look, the goal here is not to be adverse to the town of Kingston. We don't want a project that people perceive to be detrimental to the town. You know, we'd ideally like people to be pleased with this project. You know, and again, I thought that an organic cranberry bog as an end result would be a positive outcome for a site like this. You know, and I think it's a reasonable project for a number of reasons, which, again, I'm not going to rehash them. But, you know, we want to get to yes here. We don't want to be in an appeal situation. You know, that's not in anyone's interest. So, you know, I guess two thoughts. One, I think it bears mentioning, I probably should have said in my opening remarks, you know, a farmer has an aligned interest with a butters, the community, anyone who's affected, impacted by aquifer with clean water. I mean, it's not in the farmer's interest to contaminate or degrade the aquifer. It just isn't. I mean, you know, it's detrimental to the reputation of the cranberry industry. It's detrimental to the crop that's being sold from that bog. It's just, there's no upside. There's no reason that a farmer would want to adversely impact groundwater. It's critical that a farmer has clean groundwater. So, again, I think interests are aligned here, and I do think that an organic cranberry bog, you know, I'm not sure what the concern is. I don't think it's been clearly expressed. I think all we've, the closest thing we've heard is Mr. Horsley just saying, more separation from groundwater is better. What I don't think we've heard is really the basis for the concern that this will degrade the groundwater. You know, I mean, I'm not sure what, this is not a noxious process. This isn't a, you know, there aren't tailings being dumped into a pond. You know, it's just, it's an agricultural operation. They're all over the place. I mean, they're next to wellheads in the town of Duxbury, where I live, and they generally are perceived, from my standpoint, as environmentally friendly. So, again, I don't, I just think there's this thought process here. I'm not sure where it originates, that this is going to be a harmful, damaging end product. I don't think that's accurate, speaking, you know, on behalf of the applicant and just for myself. But, you know, more to the point, I guess, my, you know, there's been concerns expressed. Is it safe, and if you can answer it, I appreciate it, is it safe for me to conclude that the primary concern that people have with this project, despite what I just said, is groundwater? Is that fair? I mean, that seems to be what I've heard tonight.
I think that is a concern.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because, again, I guess if that's what everyone is most...
I'm not certain it's the only concern.
Right. It seems to be the primary. I mean, that's what I think...
It's definitely, it's definitely one of the concerns, for sure.
Yeah, I'd say that's eighty-five, ninety percent of the dialogue tonight. So I guess my point is, we'd like to come back, I think the applicant would agree, with something that is perhaps reduced in scale, maybe reduced in depth, maybe comes outside of the aqua... Let us take a whack at it respectfully. We'd like to continue and try to come back with something that speaks to those concerns. Again, we thought this was a sound project in terms of groundwater for all the reasons that Bill Madden expressed and for what I just kind of said at a layperson level. But, you know, if we haven't persuaded everyone, which it's not clear to me that we have, I think that it's beneficial to everyone, and I think it's in my client's interest to come back with something that we can get you on board with. So that would be my ask. If you're done with your deliberation to, if you think it makes sense, we'll come back with something that we might maybe get some positive feedback on. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd respond. Go ahead. Yeah, I think my response to continuing on this is that I think the way that both parties started their conversations tonight were explaining that you're both, both sides are highly proficient in your profession. I think we've given both the town the adequate time to vet. I think we've given the party, PK Realty, and their engineering team, plenty of time to come up with a plan. plenty of time to come up with a plan. And I think we're at the end part of that. I think continuing this, I have zero appetite for that. I think we've all, I think everybody's explained tonight how professional they are, how good that they are, and I don't dispute that. I think everybody in this room is a professional. I think everybody online that's talking is professional. And now it's our determination to see, within that aquifer, that tiny area of aquifer in Kingston, it's our determination, we know this is a larger aquifer. I mean, alone, this is a larger project. We know this is a cranberry. It's our job now as a board to deliberate on our little piece of town. And I think everybody's done their homework. I think everybody's done what they've needed to do. They've sent in, I think we've had months and months of this going on. I have zero appetite for continuing this. I think we should vote on what's been presented tonight.
Okay. So, again, this was a permit to, for earth removal of one, one million, one hundred thousand, five hundred cubic yards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so-
I'll move the-
Do we need to close?
We have to close the hearing first.
I'll, I'll move the board of, uh, selectmen, uh, close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll give it to Eric.
Before we take a vote, Madam Chair, may I?
Uh, okay.
Just, just briefly, very briefly-
There's a motion on the table, and there's a second, so-
Go ahead and close, go ahead and close the hearing. I just wanted to make a procedural remark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So if this board is not inclined, and I know Mr. Bouchard is, you know, speaking for himself, but if the board, which I think is highly irregular, is not inclined to grant a continuance, you know, we would ask the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice so that we can resubmit. Thank you.
Okay. So the applicant is, is requesting that, that he wants to withdraw.
We request a continuance. If you don't give us that, we-
Right, sure. Well, we just closed the hearing, so unless someone wants to reconsider that closure, I think the only option left on that table is to, um, accept the request to withdraw the application without prejudice, so they can try again with a different version. Let's say that. So that is their request. It's up to us to consider whether we want to do that or not.
Personally, I've obviously made my, my comments clear. I still think that, that is, we've, we've been down this process. We've gone through everything. They've presented what they want to present. We've got two peer reviews. We've got the, um, you know, Water Commissioner's response. We have Conservation's response. I think, um, I, my opinion, this project is as presented. And I think we should vote on it as presented.
Okay. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move the board of selectmen to deny the earth removal permit filed by PK Realty Trust for the following reasons. Possible impacts to the town of Kingston water supply. The earth removal applicant, application does not comply with several provisions of the Kingston Earth Removal Bylaw as outlined above.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yep.
Um, instead of saying "as outlined above," because I don't know if that-
Oh.
In the materials.
What I was going to say is, um, the Kingston Earth Removal Bylaw, such as Chapter Twelve, Articles Seven, Nine, and Twelve.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. 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 Um, was, was there a second?
Did you say, Eric, did you second that, or no?
I, I made an amendment. I made a friendly am-
I, I'm okay with your amendment.
So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to oppose. I didn't, I think you should have been able to withdraw, but-
Okay. An empty. So I think that was a four-one. Okay. Okay. All right. So we, uh, let's see, we did a lot of things already.
I had already grabbed one.
Um, we have number, appointment number four. Let me get my notes.
Yep.
Review Kingston open space.
Yes, so this past November, Conservation Agent Matt Pennella, uh, distributed the draft Kingston Open Space Recreation Plan. So now that we've had several months to read it, which you need several months to read it because it is quite lengthy. It is this lovely binder I have double-sided and two pages per sheet. Um, but now that we've received it and had time to read it, it is our, is on our docket here to approve it and move it from draft to final. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Just so thankful for all the time and effort that you and your team and the Open Space Committee and everybody that put into this.
It was really good.
And all of the people who contributed by participating in the surveys, just, it's a, it's a labor of love, I'm sure.
Can I ask a quick question? Is this going to be made online for everybody to see?
It's in our meeting packet.
It's in our packet? I just, I'd like it to be kind of on the front page, just so people can see it. I just think it, I know it's in our packet, but it's kind of buried in our packet. I just feel like it's a really-
I'm going to grab it. Put it on the open space.
Yeah, I just think it's a really good ob- observation. I just think it should be shown.
Address that?
Yeah, um, I guess the answer's yes. Right now, it's the draft. Um, so what we need now is, we need a letter of support from Conservation, which we've received, BOs, which is where we're at tonight, and then the local regional planning agency, which is OCPC. And I know they're working on their, uh, letter as well. So once that happens, we send it off to the State Division of Conservation Services, and they come back with any edits that they think it needs. Um, and then at that point, when we submit any edits, then that would be the final version. And then once it's final, we could put it up. I mean, there's no issue, we could put the draft up somewhere too, for people to look at, but I tend to wait until things are final.
It won't hurt for, for-
Yeah.
So to, to be clear, we're not actually accepting it, we're writing a letter of support.
You're writing a letter of support for, um, for our, I guess, draft plan.
Okay.
Do we still need to vote to write a letter?
Yeah, so, um, so if I can ask someone make a motion to, uh, submit a letter of support, maybe authorize the chair to submit a letter, letter of support, and that way I can, we can do one signature on that. Hold on, for the draft Kingston twenty-twenty-three Open Space and Recreation Plan as presented.
So moved. Might be twenty-twenty-four, I don't know.
It might be twenty-twenty-four.
When we started this, it was the twenty-twenty-one or twenty-two plan, and at this point, Concom's letter says twenty-three. It might end up, I mean, I don't know when-
Okay. All right, so you, you're still moved, Don?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
I'm just making all these edits.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you so much. And now, moving on to, like, our second to last item at this point. The MBTA update from the MBTA Working Group. So I will hand that over to members of that group, which is not me. Yeah, if it works.
I think I have it.
Lucky you. Last on the agenda.
It wasn't last, it just sort of worked out that way.
Can you share it with the screen?
Yes, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board. Um, so I'm here representing the group in term-
Sorry, just for anybody who doesn't know you.
Oh, yeah, I'm Valerie Massard, I'm the town planner. And I've been working, uh, to support the, um, MBA, MBTA Task Force. And, um, I wanted to kind of walk everyone through what, what MBTA is again. So if you go to, yeah, if you slideshow? It's kind of blocked by that. There you go. Nice job. Okay. Thank you very much. So I'm going to say click.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so click, please. Um, and, and then just, uh, scroll through. We're going to talk about what is an MBTA community? Why is it important? Uh, who's working on this for Kingston? Uh, what steps have been taken so far? And where are we in the process? Mainly, there's a national and state housing need. I don't know, um, if everyone's reading the newspapers or, or following this, this issue, but we have a nationwide housing shortage, according to every, uh, study that there is out there. And most of the cities and towns across the country are looking at adding multifamily zoning districts as a trend. Massachusetts is losing its workforce to other states, aging demographics. Um, we have New England weather, we have a very high cost of living, and we have older houses that need work compared to other parts of the country where you can get new construction for a lower cost. Kingston has similar demographic issues to Massachusetts. An aging population, the cost of housing is very high, and there's limited housing options. So just to kind of highlight that for the town of Kingston, I'm going to point with my laser here, but, um, this is a, a graph where we have the age groups. So this being the younger cohorts, school age, uh, turning into, uh, graduated from high school right about here. And we have our young adults in this area. We have middle age in this part. And then we have the, um, retirement age groups. And this is over forty years in Kingston. So the light blue is today. And if you look at the way those peaks are shaped, we have lower, uh, school age population than we've had in forty years, as a percentage of the population. We have a lower middle to young adult age range than we have in forty years as a percentage of the population. We have a much higher nearing-retirement, uh, population as a, as a representation of the population. And we have, the retirement age is, uh, again, higher than it's been in forty years. So our demographics do match those of the, of the state. So, next slide, please. The cost of housing is very high. Uh, click, please. Uh, we have, I don't know if everyone can see this very clearly, but we had a sixty-six percent year-over-year increase in the cost of a one-bedroom house, a slight drop in the, um, two bedrooms, but then an increase of seven percent. Um, I think that's eleven percent. And, uh, fifty-five percent when you get to larger homes. And if you click again, the very top line here, which is hard to read, the average, um, median house price in Kingston right now, and as of February twenty-twenty-four, is over six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's very expensive to live in this area. Uh, there was this statistic out today, there was a study done by NBC in Boston, where they found that, um, there's a twenty-five percent of the population is looking to move away. And of that, a large proportion is, uh, younger age adults because of the cost of living. It's just too high. So, next slide, please. Uh, and these are the housing types, so it's a representation of the town of Kingston's housing. The bottom being single-family, detached housing, and less than ten percent across the board of other alternatives. And by that, I mean, uh, you have a two-bed, uh, two-family or, um, a three-family, those kinds of options. We have a limited, uh, housing stock that's available for people to choose from. And in theory, those might be cheaper, but in, in today's numbers, not necessarily. Including rent, our rent is quite high. We're one of the highest renting costs in the, in the nation, in the greater, greater Boston area. So what is an MBTA community? Um, it's a new part of the, uh, zoning bylaw known as Section Three A. Uh, that means that, uh, a new law that says mass MBTA towns are defined by the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, or HLC. Uh, any towns defined by that are required to adopt new zoning to allow multifamily housing that meets state guidelines for the new law. So Kingston is required to create new multifamily zoning of fifty acres minimum size and up to eight hundred and five units, that's fifteen units per acre. And as a reference, the new apartment building that's up by the mall is eighteen units per acre density. So we're talking about a pretty high density that the state is mandating. We don't have to build that, but we have to zone for it. So, next slide. Um, uh, this is the greater Boston area. All these colored-in communities are affected by this law, which is approximately a hundred and seventy-seven communities. And Kingston is there, it's dark green because it has a train station. So it's called a commuter rail community under this law. And for us, uh, if you can click, that means that we have to focus on putting our zoning that the state is requiring within a half-mile of the T. And for reference, that's the T. This is the Indian Pond Country Club. The elementary school is right up here. Uh, the mall is, uh, out in this area. This is Exit Seventeen. And the only way to get to the T is off Exit Seventeen and kind of working your way down through Marion and Gallon Drives to the T. There's no connection otherwise from a road to get to the T. So, next slide, please. When do we have to do this? Fall time meeting this year. Um, if we are not adopting this at our fall time meeting, we will fall out of compliance with the state. Uh, what's at risk? A loss of state funds is probably the biggest problem that we would face. Uh, we've relied on several programs, and I'm just going to go through a quick list here, if you just can keep going. Six million dollars we used to, uh, put in the wastewater treatment plant and, uh, some water and sewer mains to support the development of the Amazon elevated routes and, and to further support the Lowes. Um, I think some of that capacity also went to the apartment complex. But those are revenue generating, um, tax, uh, uses for the town that, um, we couldn't have done without the infrastructure. Um, land grants, over half a million dollars towards recent purchases of conservation land. Uh, the municipal vulnerability program, we got a twenty thousand dollar grant to prepare a plan, and then any future funding, and that's a very large amount of funds that we could use for sea level rise or resizing culverts and things like that, uh, would no longer be eligible for that. And we also got a forty-five thousand dollar, uh, grant from the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund to study the Maple Street Fire Station, where we've learned that, uh, what the cost will be for us to have to clean that up. What else is at risk? Click. Legal fees. Uh, as I said, if we don't adopt this and we're out of compliance, we're going to face, uh, fines, penalties, uh, being sued by the Attorney General, as we're seeing with the town of Milton. Milton was also, um, immediately, uh, lost their funding for their seawall, uh, over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're talking about the difference between having eligibility for grants and not having to pay the legal fees, um, versus paying legal fees and not being, you know, the, the cost is quite high. Uh, and I think that the situation in Milton, uh, the state is, is offering up different solutions, one of those being that they wouldn't be able to enforce their local zoning unless they comply. That's a big question mark. So we'll see what happens. Uh, but those are the two big risks, the money and the cost. So what are we doing? We've formed a task force, and we've gotten several grants. The selectmen appointed a task force, and we went to the land use groups and asked them each to appoint a member, so that there are five members on the task force. Next slide, please. We've gotten two technical assistant grants, uh, from the Mass Housing Partnership. The first one, we had our regional planning agency, Old Colony Planning Council, do some preliminary work with us on mapping. We've gotten a second grant, we've hired VHB, which is located outside of greater Boston. Um, and they're helping us do what's called compliance modeling, where we're testing the shape of the district against the mechanical, um, spreadsheets that they have up at the state. The state has downloaded every town's GIS around their T stations or related, and they know what the land uses are, and they've done calculations and spreadsheets. And we have to show that what we zone for could be built. And we can't put it on a pond or, um, show something that's not feasible underneath it. It has, it's being vetted, um, as we go. When we talk with, uh, VHB, we're also talking with the state and having them, uh, test our compliance model against any questions that we have. And then the next steps are public outreach, and we're starting with this this week, which is part of what this is. The next step will be developing zoning language to go with the shape. So, next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about the shape of the district, working with VHB. Uh, we have looked at access sighting, and I just want to explain the steps that we took. So here's a slide again, same area. Here's the T, and that half-mile radius that we talked about actually runs up and off the screen a little bit. And why is that? We're looking at, um, the things that we have where we're away from housing. We have the elementary school and residences here on Copper's, Copper Beach Drive. We have Indian Pond Estates. We have a few scattered houses here. We have Indian Pond Estates, we have a few scattered houses here. We have the T being only eligible to be accessed by the roadway that comes through this way. We have existing infrastructure, we have water, we have sewer, we have traffic controls in terms of signals and roads, public ways, with immediate access to Exit Seventeen. So, our eyes are drawn towards the possibilities that we have on being further away from those houses. And if you could click, please. So, we're focusing on how do you get to the T? It's Exit Seventeen. And then, next click. We want to take credit for the new apartment building. You can see that the line runs right through it. And, yeah. So, we started talking with each other and with the state to see, can we get credit for those two hundred and eighty-two units out of that eight hundred and five? Because it does meet those density requirements, and it's family-friendly, which is part of what the law is requiring. So, I'm gonna just go again back to that larger circle. We have this, everything that's highlighted is actually an obstacle to being able to be used for this type of housing. We have the leaching fields at, at the Indian Pond Estates, we have leaching fields here, we have conservation land here. We have the school, we have some conservation land there. We have Smelt Brook running all the way through, and there's a buffer that we have to maintain from that brook. We have the capped landfill, we have the wastewater treatment plant. We have the actual T itself. We have the, what used to be the Forty-R Overlay District, which has now become what's called an DEP consent order, where less-than-dirty dirty soils are being hauled in and stored on, on the property. And those soils are not suitable for use unless they're covered with at least ten feet of clean fill. And we also don't know whether they'll be structurally sound to hold a large density of housing. So, we've been discouraging the state from looking at that as developable land. It has a large solar array. We have wind turbines, one, two, three here, and then the MBTA has one. And the flicker and noise zones cover that whole area. And that's another reason why it's not suitable for families in higher densities. But what we do see as we run that circle is, again, the mall complex. And we know that we have a new owner of the mall, a new investor, if you will. And can we incentivize them? And that's a little click, we got a nice cute little red arrow that's gonna point. So, next slide, please. Alright, so, by- By having all these conversations with the state, we were given a waiver of putting everything inside that radius. They're allowing us to put sixty percent outside the radius and forty percent within, which we think is much more accommodative. You know, we can do that, but we literally have to have forty percent of the fifty acres within the circle and sixty percent of the fifty acres outside. So, next slide, please. So, here's the shape that we've kind of come up with, and this is the mall again. Really, we've trimmed out Target because we're not looking to have them redevelop. We've trimmed out Macy's because that's not part of our conversation right now. We want to get this as small as we can so that we're not going more than about eight hundred and twenty capacity of units. Are we counting those, those apartments? We are, those are right there. And then, we are focusing on the land that the new investor just picked up at the mall in terms of redevelopment. And we know that Hanover Mall, for example, added housing to, but they also added new and more user-friendly intensity of, of desirability to get there. You know, Hanover, we're hoping that we would get that kind of reinvestment from our new partners at the mall to make that a destination. And so, it makes sense to us, it's already family-friendly with the different, the pins bowling and, and some of the, the restaurants, the movies. So, can we, you know, we're advocating that that is family-friendly and hoping that if we are gonna do this, then it's gonna be fought out. We have, of course, the, the watershed protection overlay district, and we have MIPA land and all of that, we're, we're taking all that into account. Then we have Sub District A, which reaches within the circle, and it includes a couple of commercial businesses that are there. And we've met with all of these businesses and gone over what we're talking about with each property owner. And we'll keep them in the loop, you could click again. So, we've narrowed this down, so we're just over eight hundred and five. We're at about eight hundred and twenty units capacity with this. And I'll just mention that the idea for this Sub District A is that it would be more like two or three stories in terms of the density. That would be more in keeping with what's on Marion and Gallon Drives, rather than getting to maybe four stories when we're up here at the mall like we have. So, next slide, please. So, this is the last slide. What we're doing is more public outreach. We're gonna do more meetings, we're gonna be on PAC TV, we're gonna have an open house. We're gonna continue to work with VHB on draft language and keep coming back to the planning board to work on that zoning and keep everybody in the loop. Our actual deadline is July first of this year. To get our information to the state for their review, it takes at least eighty-eight to ninety days to get comments back from the state on average. And that will get us comments back from the state in time to make the fall town meeting. So, we're on a kind of a tight timeline in terms of getting this through, which is why we're here, starting that process, letting you know where we are. And with that, I'd stop and ask if there's any questions.
I have one comment or correction, is that you said the task force got the grants. The grants were done by Valerie, who has been speaking and her team, AKA Erin. And their time put into the, the MBTA was an added, I mean, is such a massive added overload on what is already done by a town planner. So, I just want to say, as, as a member of the task force, we had, all we did was clap when we heard that there was, that there was a grant.
But his hands are very tired.
And congratulate, and thank Valerie and her team for doing that. Because this is a massive, massive project to, to take on top of a very important job in, in the town. So, sort of make that clarification. Thank you so much for the work you've done on, on the grants and all of this. And I know there's a lot more to go to get to October, but being on the task force and then just watching even, this has been a few years now, in the, in the making. This is, has to be one of the largest top-down, you know, I mean, top-down rezoning mandates from the state that's probably happened ever. So, or at least in modern times, or at least in my thirty-four years. So, thank you for all your work.
Eric?
So, I'm, I'm coming at this from a point of view of education and state mandates. And I got a lot of history with a lot of bogus BS mandates from the state that are always unfunded. They promise money. Now, in this case, they're not promising money, they're promising retribution, suing us, cutting off our money. They have made so many promises to Kingston over the past fifty years that they have completely screwed us. They've screwed us again over the past couple of years with taking over a hotel and saying, "We'll cover the costs to you." And they give us a thousand dollars, which doesn't even scratch the surface per student. It doesn't even touch it. So, Joe Biden's new budget has two hundred and eighty-nine billion dollars for building housing for undocumented immigrants in this country. We already have a lot here now, we have a ton in the state. Maura Healey, it was, we have a governor who was the Attorney General, she's gonna litigate her way to bully the towns. This is the biggest bunch of crock I've ever seen. Because the amount of families and kids who could come into this even bigger housing could really inundate our schools. The schools are coming back and asking for more money to get through this year. Wait until you see the budget for next year. The budgets are out of hand.
So, as, as an aside, though, we will have to-
Put it on the town meeting.
No, not just that. We have to make an educated decision as voters as to whether or not we can handle the repercussions of a decision to say no to the state.
Right.
That, that's what we need to do, we need to look at the numbers, like what is the, where is the impact? And that's, that's the analysis we'll be doing.
Where are they gonna hit us financially in terms of, i- is it just specific grants? Or is it all of our funding for education?
So, if, if I may, they, they haven't yet added education. But I know that they continue to add programs to the list of not eligible. Any infrastructure grants are out. Any, any kind of DHCD money is out, any planning money is out. So, a lot of, a lot of things would be not eligible that we need.
But how much will the cost be?
Well, that's assuming it also all gets built, right? So, that's, that's something we need to talk about.
Yeah, this is gonna be an uphill climb, because I'm a hundred percent against this.
We don't have to build it, no one has to build it. The state understands that it won't all get built. I think if you look at some of the media coverage over the weekend, for example, the Cape Cod Times wrote about how all of the schools are having this, this same, what they called a cliff of costs, where it's because of the migrant population that's come to the state and because of the special education budgets, they're all getting to the point where they're gonna ask for layoffs because they can't make the budgets. And they're telling Governor Healey just that. We all are facing a situation where, where this is becoming expensive and we don't have the funding. And, and there's no question that that's a problem. We also know that most of the communities on the South Shore are commuting, communicating through an article on WGBH, where they interviewed a lot of the local reps, and, and everyone pointed out that there's nowhere near enough money or even reliable land to build this kind of infrastructure in terms of pipes, water, sewer. So, I think that the, the state is coming back and saying, "Well, we have the money." But this, then, when you read the article, the towns say that's not anywhere near the money that's needed. So, I think that while, while we were all in this situation where we've had some legislation that was added to a bill at, I guess, the, the last hour, signed in by Governor Baker, and here we are. HLC is doing the best they can to try to write guidelines to go with it. And the towns are all trying to react to what does this do? And it's just a hundred and seventy-seven towns that are being impacted by this, and we're one of those towns. There are other towns that are talking about it, but so far, every town that I'm seeing other than Milton, the, the, the approach is, we'll do it, but-
So, if the feds come through with two hundred and eighty-nine billion dollars to the states, and the state says, "Okay, great, well, we already have this zoned in a hundred and seventy-seven communities, so we're good to go, just give us the money, we'll build it."
If the state can take private land and somehow force a town to build a wastewater treatment plant for over, we're talking like twenty million dollars probably by the time you do the infrastructure, at least, for a site. So, they'd have to have an awful lot of money.
So, they'd still have to do, we would have to do the wastewater treatment before we could do that, so?
Yeah, we don't have water or sewer. We don't intend to expand the wastewater treatment plant. At least, that was what was the discussion at the last town meeting.
Right.
We don't have any more capacity, other than that fourth tank.
So, it's just giving the zoning, not all the other requirements that they still have to go through to, to get it built?
So, the way this would work is, we would zone for it as an overlay district, meaning that all the zoning underneath is unaffected. So, the, the uses underneath are not changed, the businesses are not impacted. It's another option for them. It's then by right zoning, meaning that a site plan review, but not a no. So, site plan review is gonna be the stuff that we're working on in terms of language. And that will lay out the kinds of things that would have to happen. But the onus is on the developer or the state, if they feel they want to partner with that developer, to build the infrastructure to support something like that. It's not on the town.
That, that's better news.
Yeah, and one of the things, I may think that as we inch forward towards the fall town meeting to adopt whatever regulations they end up being, you know, we have a, we're probably gonna see quite a few towns try to adopt in the spring, is, is the assumption. So, with that, you know, I think there's gonna be a lot of change between now and, and October. I hope it's in the positive and not in, in the, in the kind of more negative retribution standpoint. I hope there's, I hope there's a, a push and a pull and awakening from the state, that this is very- I think the article that you, that Val had put in from GBH is an incredibly important article, just to see the infrastructure of each town. Each town in Massachusetts is so different. And we're next to Plumpton, Halifax, Plymouth, Duxbury, Carver. Every town is different, every, they all have different infrastructure, they all have different sewage, they all have different water capacity. And it's kind of the beauty of our, of our area. And to cookie-cutter or drop something on this is, is absolutely wrong in a moral, and I'll say it. But we have to inch our way towards it in order to, you know, come into compliance because we don't know what the, we don't know what the next steps are gonna be. And I think Val's done an incredible job of educating the positive sides of what can be done with that, with that district. And I think there's, I, my hope is that as we go past May and June where most town meetings are, that there's gonna be more clarification on what other towns have done and will be able to take some of those resources and apply that to what, to what we have. I mean, I think it's, you know, it's, it's a mandate, you go towards it, you do the best you can to mitigate as much risk as you can as a town, understanding fully that you're, you're a little handcuffed to it. But also hoping along the way that road, that as roadblocks hit from other towns and other communities, that, that will have a positive effect on the state's view of the mandate and of, and of, and of the zoning. If that, I mean, I'm not gonna totally speak for the task, task force, but that's, that's my hope, is that we, as we inch forward, some of those, some of those boundaries and things shift and, and the state realizes this is much more complicated at a municipal level.
I just, I, can I just say, like, you know, I've gone to some of these meetings, I, I like, I like to go to all those webinars and just kind of listen. And, and I, and I think there's been talk of like, you know-
Talking about the webinars that the-
The MMA puts on, I, I'm trying to go, like, you know, when I started listening to all this, and Valerie, you're amazing, I remember walking around with Sue Moran, and we went into the apartments, and I said, "Why can't we use this?" We're literally a half a mile, we're in the middle of an apartment complex, why can't we use this? And, you know, thinking outside the box of things we already have, right? We already have apart, two hundred and some odd apartments right in, like, right, right there in the middle and saying, you know, "We have to fight for this, we have to see what we can do." To me, we are a smaller town. And so, to have eight hundred and fifty units in a smaller town, it makes it me crazy to think that there's not some mitigation of like, yes, we are the end of a, of a commuter rail, but we're also a small town. We're not Brockton, we're not Plymouth, we are, we are Kingston. So, the next town, although Plymouth did have a train station, it closed. But like, I don't want to close our train station just to not build houses, you know what I mean?
No, but they're still impacted as an adjacent community.
They have to build something like twenty, or zone for, excuse me, twenty-eight hundred units, something along those lines.
So, I think that's, but that's the crucial piece, right? It's zone for, not necessarily-
Our number is eight hundred and five units.
What would it be if, if that was-
You're adjacent?
Yeah, yeah, if we were adjacent, because it's based on like a percentage, correct?
It's based on population and a percentage, so it probably wouldn't be that much different.
I just feel like, that's a lot of units for smaller towns, and I think a lot of these towns, like you were saying, I think, you're, the article, I wish people to read the article, because I think it really helps to see the infrastructure of a lot of these smaller towns, like, like ourselves. And, and you know, I feel that, you know, look at, you know, I think of the Sacred Heart Complex that was going to go in, now is no longer, you know. The infrastructure of these towns and to think, okay, well, just to know that we have to at least zone for it, we may not be able to have to build it, but it's still, it's still frustrating that, you know, they don't do their homework, they just want to build housing, and they don't do the homework on how long this is gonna take. And I think you doing all this homework is gonna help other towns, too. So, I think having this task force in helping to see how we're navigating it in, in a way that is not, we're just gonna get the grants and funding away like Milton kind of said, forget it. I think it's great that you're, you're trying to work with, with what we're, what we've given, what we've been given. And I think it will help other towns in some ways, too, around us, to maybe see what we're doing. Like you say, I think it's gonna hopefully come to fruition later.
I think we're all gonna learn from each other, especially this spring, as we see how those town meetings shake out.
Yeah, and, and the good news is that the state is hosting the different consultants that are working on this as groups, so they can learn from each other, because each consultant may have ten, twenty towns. So, they're able to share with each other and share with the state some of the confusion. And I think it's been, I have to say that HLC has really opened up their doors in the last couple of months as this has been going on. And they have open house, they have open hours, they're actually making adjustments to the spreadsheet. They're making some adjustments to the requirements. So, I see them trying to get, do more give and take than early on. And I do hope, as, as you both said, that, that maybe there'll be some give and take as we keep moving forward. I think there are dozens of towns heading right into their spring town meeting this year because- year, because some of them don't have to do it this year, but they want to get ahead of it and be able to make changes if they need to. We were looking at the new ownership at the mall and trying to work with them. They've come to most of our meetings, and so, we didn't want to try to push and get to spring town meeting when they're new arrivals and they're just wrapping their heads around what they've purchased. So, we're hoping that we can take that time, work with them, work with the community, and have everybody on the same page as we go forward in terms of learning, talking, and understanding how this could impact us.
If I could just add, and as pessimistic and as annoyed as I am with the state, I appreciate you and all the work that you guys and the task force has done. I mean, regardless of whether it's supported or not, we have to do it. We have to do this part of it. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing, especially with the mall ownership.
Well, if it's any consolation, she hears a similar monologue from the planning board from time to time on this initiative, so.
Just from time to time?
From time to time.
I think it's a very, it's a very challenging situation that I think everyone is in, based on a last-minute write-in on a bond bill a couple of years ago. But it is, at least it's a one idea, and it's a step forward in trying to address the housing issue, whether it's the, you know, whether we're going to take two steps back, we'll see. But at least the conversation's on the table in every town.
Okay, any other questions?
No. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Val.
Appreciate the update. Anytime you want to come back, just let me know. I'll make your appointment at six oh one.
Okay.
All the duties as assigned is really going beyond.
So, double-check me, but I think we're done except for the town administrator report?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Keith is out, so I'm just going to read through what he provided us for an update for this week. So, financial updates, Kingston received receipts totaling eighty-five thousand and eighty-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-four migrant aid from the Commonwealth to supplement the rooms tax lost from extended stays at Kingston Hotels. The Community Preservation Committee has recommended the following projects be presented at the annual town meeting for voter consideration. Affordable Housing Trust, fifty thousand dollars. Repairs to the building on Major John Bradford Home, seventy-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Advance the Jones River Corridor Preservation, fifty thousand dollars. Calista Farm Grassland, two thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Chimney-Swift Tower Eagle Scout Project, one thousand dollars. Tennis Courts Rehabilitation Renovation, one hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Recreation Opochinski Irrigation Wells, ninety-two thousand dollars. Keith has also asked to, he was asked to attend a meeting later this week for the school department, but as he's out, I will, I will plan to attend. If anyone else would like to attend, I would welcome you to do that. It's on Thursday, I believe. Project updates, the Boat Ramp Project is beginning on March twenty-fifth, when the tide is at its lowest. And personnel update, Denby Forbes and Priscilla Brackett, both admins from the Veterans Department have provided their resignations. They will both be leaving in July. Priscilla, Denby, and Keith met with the Duxbury Veterans Agent to determine if there's any interest in sharing the position with Duxbury. The two towns would become a district and would share the Veterans Agent position along with an administrative position, and that option is supported by both folks that are doing the job now. They're meeting again in the near future to continue discussions, and so, we'll probably hear more on that soon. And that is it. So, unless there are selectmen comments, so anybody can make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourning at eight fourteen PM. Have a great night, everybody.